Are we ready? All right, well, good evening, everyone. I will bring the June 20, 2022 meeting of the San Carlos Planning Commission to order. And we can begin with the Pledge of Allegiance. If we could rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with justice for all.
Like a roll call, please.
Commissioner Garvey.
Present.
Commissioner Yakapony.
Present.
Commissioner Bradley.
Present.
Vice Chair Clements.
Present.
And Chair Roof.
Present. The next item on the agenda is public comment. And public comment is limited to items that are not on the agenda. The commission may briefly respond to statements made or questions posed as allowed by the Brown Act, Government Code, Section 54, 954.2. However, the commission's general policy is to refer items to staff for attention or have a matter placed on a future commission agenda for a more comprehensive action or report. Is there anyone in the waiting room who would like to speak on an item that's not on the agenda? I guess Sarah is in the other room. Is that?
Yes, that's correct.
Sarah, is there anyone in the waiting room?
No callers at this time.
Thank you. In that case, we can move to the next item, which is approval of the minutes of the Planning Commission meeting on May 16, 2022. Do any commissioners have comments?
None.
They were very detailed minutes. I have no comments either. So I would entertain a motion to approve the minutes.
So moved.
I'll second that.
We have a motion in a second. Can I have a roll call, please?
Commissioner Garvey.
Yes.
Commissioner Yakapony.
Yes.
Commissioner Bradley.
Yes.
Vice Chair Clements.
Yes.
And Chair Roof.
Yes. The next item on the agenda is appointment of officers. And we'll, I guess, in this order, elect a Planning Commission Chair, a Commission Vice Chair, a Primary Residential Design Review Committee Chair, and an alternate Residential Design Review Committee Chair. So we can discuss the Planning Commission Chair first. And is there any process that we should be following here? Or can we have some discussion and then?
Certainly, like with any other action item, I would recommend the Planning Commission address these one by one. You can certainly do any order. So if you wanted to kind of work your way from the bottom and go up, you can do that too. So that's the pleasure of the commission. And somebody would need to move to nominate the Chair, for example, or the RDRC Chair in a second. And if, after a motion in a second, if the Planning Commission would like to discuss, you're able to. If you're ready to just take the vote, we can do that.
Well, I'd sort of like to have opportunity for some comments before we dive into motions or voting. And so maybe I could suggest maybe we start with Commissioner Garvey and then move from right to left.
Thank you, Chair Roof. I have enjoyed chairing the Residential Design Review Committee this year. I've enjoyed listening to all the applicants and the interesting projects. And I'm open to what the commission might consider for me next year. Thank you.
I enjoyed being Vice Chair this year. I only ended up chairing one meeting, but did enjoy that hardly, serving with my capable chair here. I am time constrained in terms of serving on the RDRC. I think I would find it difficult to serve on the RDRC and the Planning Commission to have double meetings every two weeks. That would be difficult for me. Thank you.
Well, I've certainly enjoyed and learned a lot from being Chair of the Planning Commission and really relished the opportunity to bring out the perspectives from the different Planning Commission members. It's sort of my first mission. And then to bring out my own thoughts is my second mission as Chair. And I've enjoyed that. And I'll be very happy to set back into a more participatory role going forward. As far as the RDRC goes, on a biweekly basis, I also would not have the bandwidth to do that. It's a pretty major commitment. Potentially, as the alternate, if the alternate, just, I think, is occasional, I could potentially pull that off. And so that's my situation.
Thank you, Chair, and thank you for your leadership over the past year. I'll probably say so again later. But previously, I had been Vice Chair of Planning. Had, I think, one, maybe two opportunities to have led one of our sessions. My own time is a little more flexible now than it was previously. And so for either of the Chair positions, I'd be willing to stand. Or, and certainly Vice Chair.
Commissioner Bradley.
This is a hard decision because all of you are well qualified. All of you have even, either done an excellent job as being Chair or getting in line to move up the Chairs and service as Chair of the Planning Commission or the RDRC. It just works out pretty well that way. Five or six years, I've been here six years, and I was RDRC Chair two of those years and one year as a Planning Commission Chair. And again, I think all of you are qualified and would do an excellent job. I remember we asked James Yakapony to be Planning Commission Chair a couple of years back. And due to his work assignments and schedule, he was unable to do it, although I know he had the interest to do it at that time. So I would nominate James Yakapony for Planning Commission Chair this time.
I'll second that. A great nomination.
Any discussion before we move to a? Well, we have, we do have a motion in a second. Should we have a roll call, please? Oh, did you have? Do you have a?
More nominations as well?
Yep.
I think we've done them one at a time for the roll call vote.
For the Chair position or?
This is for the Planning Commission Chair, correct?
Yes. But how would we know if there were multiple candidates if you're just voting up or down only on one?
Right.
Oh, I see. So you want to go ahead? Yeah, sure. So we can, we can continue to? I see what you mean. That's, you're absolutely right. Let's go ahead. If it's the pleasure of the commission.
So we can, we can hold the roll call on the first motion and continue our discussion? That would be wonderful. Commissioner, Vice Chair Clements.
I'd like to make a motion. I'd like to nominate David Roof for a position of Chair as well. I think he's done a very nice job facilitating conversation and would be happy with the leadership of any of the commissioners, by the way. But have enjoyed my first year here with him as Chair, so I would like to nominate him.
Well, I should, I'll say thank you for that. Other thoughts? I don't, I don't have a second on that. I'm, although if there was a need, I might second that motion for myself. But I'm sensing that I might like to have the opportunity passed to someone else. So while I'm very flattered that you made that motion, I'm not going to second it myself. Any other thoughts?
If it were your wish to continue, I would support that. I got the sense that you'd like to take us an alternate role and respect those wishes. So that would be what I would say.
Yeah, I think you captured that, my feelings there. So I think we maybe do, we have a motion and a second on the table. And unless somebody has any final thought, let's take a roll call. A roll call, please.
Commissioner Garvey.
Yes.
Commissioner Yakapony.
Yes.
Commissioner Bradley.
Yes.
Vice Chair Clements.
Yes.
And Chair Roof.
Yes. Congratulations.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
Yakapony.
So now, moving down that list, I guess we're on to the Vice Chair role. And?
Sorry about that. My?
There we go. Any thoughts, any discussion on this one before we, before we make a nomination? I guess I would put my hat in the, in the ring for the Planning Commission Vice Chair or potentially the alternate for the Residential Design Review Committee. So I'm, I sort of feel like I'd like to participate in some way if I'm perfectly willing. But the Vice Chair role is, you know, mostly standing in the background, except for that occasional meeting that the Chair misses. It is a good stepping stone into the Chair position. So if, so maybe if somebody was, I have one year left on the commission, so I don't have that need, but maybe.
With Kristin Clements having a schedule such that she can't do the RDRC and Chair Roof could do either and would be great at either, it might make sense to consider. And I will nominate David Roof to be the Vice Chair of the Planning Commission.
Wait a minute, did you get, is that how you wanted to do it?
No, I'm sorry. I would nominate Kristin Clements to be the Vice Chair of the Planning Commission. Thank you for that very important correction.
Thank you. I would accept, and I'd be happy to participate. And I feel bad about being confined regarding the RDRC at this time. Thank you.
Comments or a second?
I will second.
Okay, we have, we have a motion in a second for the Vice Chair, Planning Commission Vice Chair. Can we have a roll call, please? This is to elect Kristin Clements as Planning Commission Vice Chair.
Jim did.
Jim, Jim made a second. I did. What was that?
Just clarifying the motion that's on the floor.
So I believe we have a motion on the floor to elect Kristin Clements as the Planning Commission Vice Chair.
Thank you.
And we have a second from Commissioner Yakapony on that motion.
Yes.
And so if, if there's any discussion? I'm not seeing any. So can we have a roll call on that motion, please?
Commissioner Garvey.
Yes.
Commissioner Yakapony.
Yes.
Commissioner Bradley.
Yes.
Vice Chair Clements.
Yes.
And Chair Roof.
Yes.
Thank you very much.
And congratulations to you.
I'm happy to serve. Thank you.
Congratulations.
Moving down the list, we can discuss electing the Primary Residential Design Review Committee Chair. And that's a big job, an important one. And it takes a time commitment. Any, any thoughts from? Ellen, you've, I should say Commissioner Garvey, you've done a wonderful job in the past year. And I'm sure the committee would continue to benefit from, from your leadership there if you were willing to take that. Is that something you would be open to?
Thank you for that confidence. And if that is the wish of the commission, I would be happy to do that for another year.
If that was a motion, I will second the motion.
Yeah, that was my, I guess that was my motion then. And so we have a motion and a second to elect Ellen Garvey as the Primary Residential Design Review Committee Chair. Can we have a roll call, please?
Commissioner Garvey.
Yes.
Commissioner Yakapony.
Yes.
Commissioner Bradley.
Yes.
Vice Chair Clements.
Yes.
And Chair Roof.
Yes. Congratulations. You've done such a good job there.
Thank you.
Thank you.
And now we get to the last item, which is the Alternate Residential Design Review Committee Chair.
I would like to nominate David Roof for the Alternate Design RDRC Chair. You'd make a fantastic number two.
I'll second that.
We have a motion in a second to elect David Roof as the Alternate Residential Design Review Committee Chair. Can I have a roll call, please?
Commissioner Garvey.
Yes.
Commissioner Yakapony.
Yes.
Commissioner Bradley.
Yes.
Vice Chair Clements.
Yes.
And Chair Roof.
Yes.
Congratulations.
Wonderful. We've all, we've all got a good job to do this coming year. I think it should be an interesting year as we move back into the in-person world and things ramp up. Okay, moving along. The next item on the agenda is the public hearing. And the procedure for public hearing, the staff will present a report on the history, physical features, et cetera, on the application, followed with the staff's recommendations. The applicant will make a presentation thereafter. Interested members of the community may speak on the proposal. When all interested parties have had an opportunity to be heard, the hearing will be closed and no further discussion from the floor can be held. The commission will then consider the evidence and make its recommendation. If you challenge a public hearing item in court, you may be limited to raising only those issues you or someone else raised at the public hearing described in this notice, the public notice, or in written correspondence delivered to the city at or prior to the public hearing. Speakers should state their name prior to addressing the commission. This will assist staff in preparing the minutes. The public hearing item we have tonight is for 1087 Old County Road, APN 046184270, which is a request for an amendment to the Plan Development, PD, zoning district ordinance 1240. Staff, would you like to make a presentation?
Yes, before we get started and through the Chair, I would like to introduce one of our contract planners. This, tonight, presenting this item is Chris Decumos. He is a contract senior planner with Good City Company. And he's been with us for a while, and I think this is his first time presenting before the commission, so I thought it would be nice to make an introduction. So now I'll, I'll hand it over to Chris.
Welcome, Chris.
Thank you. Good evening, Chair Roof, Vice Chair Clements, and Commissioners. This evening, I'm presenting a request from Advanced Auto Parts for an amendment to Plan Development Zoning District 12, ordinance 1240, to allow the division of space. So the site in question is located at the corner of Old County Road and Britton Avenue. The building, which was approved in 1998, is 18,560 square feet. At the time that it was approved, a plan development was needed because the east side specific plan was in place, which has since been replaced by the general plan adopted in 2009. At the time, though, the east side specific plan called for regional retail in the, in that area. So buildings had to have a minimum square footage of 25,000 square feet. The plan development allowed a building smaller than the 25,000 square feet, but it prohibited at the time the division of space to ensure that there's one tenant in the building. Thank you. So the request is to amend the Plan Development Zoning District ordinance 1240 to allow the division of space. The, the building will be co-operated, but separately, by Advanced Auto Parts, which will be in charge of the automotive parts retail section. And then separately, Pep Boys will operate the automotive service section. At the time, the ordinance was passed in 1240, the Planning Commission had approved an ordinance that prohibited the division of space. While the ordinance did not include that prohibition nor the conditional use permit, staff felt it best to clarify that the division of space is permitted, which is why we're here tonight, to make the recommendation that an amendment to Plan Development Zoning District 12 allow the division of space. The project is categorically exempt through 15301A, which allows interior or exterior alterations involving such things as interior partitions, which this project would allow. Yes, thank you. The project was noticed to the public in the newspaper on June 9, 2022, and staff has not received any comment regarding this particular item. I move that the Planning Commission adopt a resolution recommending the City Council adopt an ordinance amending ordinance 1240. Oh, excuse me, Commissioner, Chair. I should also say that Advanced Auto Parts is represented this evening by Karen Brown. There's not a presentation, but she's available to answer any questions.
Okay, thank you. We'll first, as always, see if there are any clarifying questions from the commissioners for Chris or from the applicant. And, and then we can open for a public comment before, before debating the, the resolution. So any clarifying questions? Commissioner Bradley.
Just a basic question. How, will this be, I think I read 250 maximum square feet, the sign? Am I correct on that? Chris? How does that relate to the Pep Boys sign that's there now? Larger, the same, smaller? I'm worried about the one outshining the other, you know? Plus, there can be other, more than one, just one tenant renting. So there'd be multiple signs to be added on. Am I correct?
Yeah, I see on packet page 16, item number five, it says the signage for the project shall not exceed 260 square feet. And so does the, does the proposal, does the applicant have a specific proposal for how the signage would work? That might make it easier to assess. And is the signage even a point of, in our resolution tonight? Is it applicable?
Thank you for the question, Commissioner Bradley and Chair Roof. So for discussion tonight, the sign program is not for discussion. There's a separate permit that is being pursued for the site.
Okay. Any other clarifying questions? Vice Chair Clements.
Thank you, Chair. I, along the same lines as Commissioner Bradley, I just had a question. So as we, this ordinance originally asked that only one tenant be allowed in a space. And I'm just trying to understand, is there, while we amend this permit, is there some kind of policy being set about the division of space in this kind of regional destination building? There happens to be a division of the square footage. I'm just wondering, is there something that, you know, if the next applicant came forward, would there be some kind of precedent that we'd be looking to about, you know, a fair division of space or some kind of like, you know, a minimal division of, you know? Is there something that is being changed about the policy? I know there's just a very simple change being made to the permit itself.
Through the, through the Chair Commission. I would, and Chris, you can clarify if you, through your research, you found anything further. But I think with this particular amendment, it would be bringing, it would be bringing this project that was approved years ago for just one tenant more in line with our current policies today by allowing a multi-tenant, multiple tenants or more than one tenant inside one building. So this gives the particular building more flexibility in how it can be used. So we're not moving in a direction that would be in conflict with our current policies that aren't, for, within the zoning district, that's not a PD. Right. Do you mind if I ask a follow-up question? So our current policies under today's general plan, is there any specification about the division of space within one property? No, it's really about the uses that would be allowed. And it would be up to the applicant to propose a division of space that's most suitable for, you know, proposed tenants and future tenants. Got it. So it's ultimately flexible. No, no policy being set here. Okay. I had one other quick clarifying question, if you don't mind.
Please.
I'm just curious, what the, what is the public outreach policy about how much notice folks need to get after the newspaper ad is published? How far in advance are people supposed to be notified of actions? The minimum requirement is 10 days prior to the hearing. And so we follow, and this is set under common procedures within the zoning ordinance. So it specifies, you know, if it's obviously project-specific like this one, it requires, it specifies the distance and the amount of days that it needs to be published before the commission hearing. And so our standard practice is to follow what's, that's in the zoning ordinance. We do have the discretion to do more for certain projects where we feel it's in the best interest of, you know, maybe it's something that's really important, where we might do a citywide notification or notify tenants rather than, well, tenants in addition to property owners. So there, we do do that sometimes as well, depending upon the project. But I think through, Chris, you can clarify that, that the notice that, notice was published 10 days in advance. I think that's in the pocket.
That's correct.
And it was just owners. Okay. Thank you very much.
Commissioner Garvey and then Commissioner Yakapony have their hands raised.
Thank you, Chair Roof. Two questions. The first is not so much about parking as the parking lot. When I drive by there every so often, there's, the lot is full of new cars, certain types of, you know, different brands of cars. Is that considered a tenant if you're parking your product there? And is that continued to be allowed under this new arrangement? Or is the parking lot really not even considered for, for, as a tenant occupying it?
So the parking, I don't believe is, the vehicles occupying the parking spaces will be considered tenants? And actually, so for this Pep Boys Center, a lot of the vehicles queuing up probably is more of a canary to, to point to Pep Boys focusing more solely on the automotive services aspect, in addition to expanding to electric vehicles, automotive service. So some of that, so as they work on the vehicles, they're in queue in the parking lot. So some of that, so as they work on the vehicles, they're in queue in the parking lot.
Yeah, that, that makes sense, but I've seen dozens of other brand-new cars that a car dealer has just parked there for a week or two or a month or whatever to have them sit there. I take it they're not considered a tenant, and that's a, an allowable use and will be continued to be an allowable use in the future?
Yeah, through the Chair, I just checked with Chris. I wasn't aware that there are parked vehicles on the site. I don't know if the applicant is aware, but our understanding is that this application is just for the division of space. It's not for any type of allowance of, of, you know, of automobile storage. So that would be something that staff would have to look into to verify, you know, what, what is happening on the site, if there's something happening on the site, the site is being used in a way that's inconsistent with the plan development. That would be something that staff would have to follow up on.
Thank you. It sounds like that's outside of the purview, though, of what we're doing this evening, so that's helpful. And my-
I'm sure it is. I'm sorry, but on that point, wouldn't that mean that the application would need to be carried forward? I mean, if the applicant is not under, is not in compliance with the conditions of its current permit, wouldn't that affect the consideration of an amendment to this permit?
It would. That would be something that we, we would look at, and it could be that the Planning Commission could choose to continue this item so that we can investigate that. But my understanding, and, and Chris, you can confirm with the research and your conversation with the applicant, it doesn't appear that staff was aware that this particular use was happening on the site. That would be something we would have to look into. But this, but automobile storage is not part of this amendment to the existing plan development, so is that correct?
That's correct. And automobile storage is not included in, in the development centers for the plan development.
It might be helpful to hear from the applicant. I was just driving by as an interested party, and I saw the dozens of new cars parked there, and I, I made an assumption, but it might be helpful to have clarification from the applicant.
Oh, actually, could you come to the microphone, please? And when you do that, just give your name for the record. There you go, a red light is on.
Excellent. Thank you for the question. This has actually come up in a couple of other municipalities. I'm Karen Brown. I'm with Advanced Auto Parts. I'm a project manager for the 109 stores that we're opening in California. Typically, what you're seeing in that environment is fleet vehicles that Pep Boys is under contract to perform service on. So car dealerships or school districts or other, they're not there long-term. They're just there because they have a fleet contract with Pep Boys, so.
Thank you. That's very helpful.
You're welcome, and thank you for the question.
If I might, one additional question?
Sure.
On page 16 of the, of the packet, number 11, it talks about the applicant and the contractor shall comply with all mitigation measures identified in the environmental review documents. There is a creek that abuts the side of the property, and there are a number of creek restoration efforts that are anticipated in, in that area with other properties. My sense, or my hope is that going forward, any creek restoration efforts would, that are on your side, would, would continue to move forward even though there are a different setup with different tenants.
Thank you, Commissioner Garvey. Yes, you're talking to the right environmental nerd in front of you for that. The nice thing about the company that I work for is we are very, very, very involved in the communities in which we serve. So though it's very easy to put the retail label on us, we are a retailer after all. We dive in headfirst with any community projects that the community wants us involved in. We do food banks, we do street cleanup, we do pretty much anything that the communities ask for us. It's fun. It's good to be involved, and absolutely, we would be involved in that.
Thank you very much. Those are all my questions.
Thank you. And just to clarify a point from that question, the question before us is all for internal division of the, of the site, correct? There's no external work?
So the Chair, that's correct.
Commissioner Yakapony, you've been very patient.
Not at all, thank you. Maybe first is, or both, two questions, and I think they pick up on where Commissioner Clements was, was going. Clarifying for me, is this ordinance change linked to the plan development or the property? In other words, in the future, should a new plan development come in, does this allowance of division carry forward or does it terminate?
Through the, through the Chair and Commission, this would be tied to the property. The plan development applies to the subject property of any tenant that is there today and any future tenant. So it's not tied specifically, I believe, to a tenant, but Chris can clarify. There's no, there's no requirement in the ordinance that it be Pep Boys, or can you clarify that, Chris?
Right. So there is no limitations to who, to the plan development in regards to ownership. It's, it's for the property.
And I suppose, okay, thank you for that. I think the, the only other question is if there was a change to, let's say, want to put a donut shop in instead of Advance, and by the way, I'm not expecting that, but just, if that were the case, is that now permitted? In other words, what requires the format of the businesses that are there today, service and parts, to remain in a future construct?
So currently, the uses are governed by the conditional use permit for the site. Should other uses be proposed, we would have to look at, you know, what's considered or what's allowed under the conditional use permit.
Very good.
Any other clarifying questions from the commissioners before we open for public Vice Chair Clements?
Chris, building on what you just said, if a donut shop went into that space, would they require a conditional use permit to operate? Does any business need to require a conditional use permit, or is it the nature of the use that dictates what gets a CUP and what does not?
So for this specific plan development, when it was put into place in 1998, there were specific uses that were allowed under the east side specific plan. And so once that went away, then we had the plan development and then the general plan land use designation. So should, so right now, the uses are as governed by the plan development and the associated conditional use permit. If other uses are proposed, you know, I think we'd have to, I'd have to look more into that, that question.
Okay. But this CUP then as amended would get, the amendment would be recorded on site? Is that typically what happens? Per Commissioner Yakapony's observation, that this would then inure to any subsequent tenants, do they get recorded?
For the conditional use permit. So the conditional use permit is currently tied to the site.
Right. Does it get recorded, legally recorded?
Correct. Okay. Yeah. So, thank you. So what the commission is considering tonight is just an amendment to the plan development. The conditional use permit was approved on the same night, but separate from the plan development.
Is the plan development permit recorded on the site?
I, you know-
Don't they usually get recorded on site?
Yeah, the PD would.
Okay. Yes. Thank you.
I have, I have one question, perhaps somewhat tangent to the actual question before the commission, but are you planning to have electric vehicle charging capacity there?
Thank you for the question. We are testing that in five locations. This is not one of them at this time, but we are testing it in, in five stores in Los Angeles. If our customers respond to that, then we would, you know, come back and ask if we're allowed to, to put those. That seems to definitely be the way that our customer base is moving, and so we like to do whatever we can to support the customer.
Thank you. Yeah, I understand you're bringing in electric vehicle repair, so it seemed like that could be part of the thinking, it was mostly encouraging you to think in that direction.
Yeah, we are definitely excited about it. We, right now, we have, we just passed the 34-store mark, so for us, that's a big deal. And we have several stores in LA that are open, that have the charging stations, and they are, and, you know, we don't charge anybody for them, we just, when they're in shopping, they can just plug their car in, and the response has been very, very positive. So if that continues, then, you know, we'll look at putting that in, in more and more stores.
Thank you. Any other clarifying questions before we open for? Okay, let's, let's open for public comment. If you would like to make a public comment on agenda item number 6A, 201 Industrial Road, now is the-
Through the Chair, I apologize, and I really apologize for interrupting you.
It's okay.
There is a typo on this slide, so for those who are watching this meeting, it's agenda item number, let me just clarify that. This is agenda item number 7A for 1087 Old County Road.
Okay.
So apologize for that. This just has the old, the item from a prior meeting, so, but it's actually agenda item 7A, 1087 Old County Road.
Okay. If you'd like to make a public comment on item number 7A for 1080 Old County Road, now is the time to speak. Thank you for that clarification. What was that?
1087.
1087 in Old County Road. Now is the time to speak. And if you're on Zoom, you can virtually raise your hand by clicking on the raise hand icon, or on the phone by pressing star nine and then star six to unmute when called upon. Sarah, is there anyone in the waiting room for public comment?
There are no callers at this time.
Okay, let's, I would entertain a motion that we close the public hearing for this item?
I'll move that we close the public hearing for this item.
I'll second the motion.
Motion and a second, a roll call, please.
Commissioner Garvey?
Yes.
Commissioner Yakapony?
Yes.
Commissioner Bradley?
Yes.
Vice Chair Clements?
Yes.
And Chair Roof?
Yes. Okay, now we're in the deliberation. Are there comments from commissioners? Use my little control panel here. Nobody has pushed their button yet. The top button. We're practicing here.
Thank you.
Okay. Commissioner, Commissioner Bradley and then Commissioner Garvey.
I'm ready to support this, so I will move that the San Carlos Planning Commission adopt a resolution recommending that the City of San Carlos Council adapt an ordinance amending ordinance 1240.
Thank you. We have a motion. Let's see if there's, we have a question pending from Commissioner Garvey.
Thank you, Chair Roof. I was going to say that I, I too support the project. I think it's going to be a nice division of space and a nice addition to the community, and I'll be supporting the project. And if now is an appropriate time, I will second the motion, but the discussion should please continue.
We can see if anybody else would like to chime in.
I'll add, I support it. It's always good to have vibrant and focused tenants in the space and understand that, you know, the way you run a business versus what businesses run changes over time, so glad to know both repair and parts will still be available, and I'll look forward to the partnership with Advanced.
I also support, support the idea of being flexible when the uses are compatible like this. We supported a similar division of the, of the pet supply store. That made sense, and I think this equally makes sense, and so excited about the possibilities.
I'd like to chime in, just that I also support the motion, and along Commissioner Yakapony's line, vibrant use of the space that we have with, that's very active with a lot of people and more traffic and more customers. That's exactly what we want, and I wish you all the luck. Thank you.
And Commissioner Garvey, I think you were making a second there, but there was an if in there, so.
Let me clarify that. I will second Commissioner Bradley's motion.
We have a motion and a second? Can I have a roll call, please?
Commissioner Garvey?
Yes.
Commissioner Yakapony?
Yes.
Commissioner Bradley?
Yes.
Vice Chair Clements?
Yes.
And Chair Roof?
Yes. Welcome, congratulations, and good luck.
Thank you.
I do have a question. On a lighter vein, my father, God rest his soul, he's been dead for 50 years. We lived near a Pep Boys store in Glendale, California, and there were always three characters, and I think their names were Manny and Mo, and I, my dad and I argued, who, who is the third name?
Jack.
Jack.
Yeah, it's Manny, Mo, and Jack.
Jeff?
Jack.
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 Manny, Mo, and Jack. Thank you so much. I've been waiting for the authority on this for many years.
Better than Wikipedia, right there.
Okay, that's, moving along onto the next item on our agenda, item eight, reports, correspondence, and general information. We can start with a report on recent City Council actions.
Yes, I would, thank you, Chair Roof. I would like to inform the commission that last Monday, June 13th, the City Council did introduce an ordinance to make changes to the below-market-rate ordinance that this commission heard a couple of weeks ago. So it was introduced, as well as those minor modifications to accessory dwelling units. The second reading for both of those will be on June 27th, and then those amendments take place 30 days thereafter, so they would be in place by the, in effect by the end of July. And, and that is it for recent City Council actions.
Thank you. Next item, Planning Commission comments or reports.
Yes, Chair, I'd like to wish everyone a happy Juneteenth. I was a little surprised to have a commission meeting on a national holiday, but I'm glad to see you all tonight. Happy Juneteenth.
Thank you. I see the, the hand raise icon is on for Commissioner Garvey and Bradley. Is that just from a previous? I can turn them off here, too. Let's see, maybe, I guess this is hour, hour one. Yes, so Commissioner Garvey, did you have a comment?
Well, I just wanted to say, thank you, Chair. I wanted to acknowledge that this is Commissioner Don Bradley's final meeting. Don, thank you, on behalf of, I think, the whole commission, thank you for your six years of service on the commission and the Residential Design Review Committee. We're going to miss you. I'm going to miss you. I've learned a lot from you. I've learned a lot from you and your wealth of knowledge on urban planning that you bring to the commission, and thank you for helping to make the city of San Carlos truly the city of good living. Thank you.
Thank you.
Before he gets to...
Respond briefly and say that I've learned from each and every one of you, and it's been my pleasure. When people ask, thank me for serving in the Air Force for a long time, I say it was my pleasure and my duty and my honor. And I'll echo that with this planning commission. It's the only planning commission I've ever been on, but I know it's the best. I know, I talked to planners in other cities around, and we're very lucky. This is the city of good government and good planning. Thank you. I'll miss you all.
I would like to also thank Commissioner Bradley for her service. I'm sorry that our time together has been so brief and in person so brief, but I really respect all of the knowledge and all of the experience that you've brought to the role. And, and just thank you for devoting all the long hours, both virtual and in person. I know it hasn't been easy over the last couple of years, and yet you've made it work, and I just really respect that, and thank you for everything. It's been a pleasure to serve with you.
And I'll chime in that I've really been inspired by both your professionalism and commitment to the profession and doing things according to the profession, as well as to your common sense advocacy for the town. I mean, so, so the signs that are too big, these kind of things, that those messages come through so strongly, and I think it's very important on the planning commission that we have that. And so I've really been inspired by, by your, your, your strong drives in those directions, so thank you.
Thank you, Chair.
Difficult to really add to all those comments, so I would just second all of them and wish you all the best.
And to you, likewise, all of you. Thank you. Maybe I'll be in the audience one of these days cheering you on. And welcome, Chris. Good job.
Thank you. Any other planning commission comments or reports?
Thank you, Chair Roof, for your leadership this past year. There's been a lot that has happened on the planning commission. You've led a lot of very big and complex meetings and issues, and I really appreciate your leadership, and I'm looking forward to working with you next year on the Residential Design Review Committee. Thank you.
Thank you for that, and I'm also looking forward to learning, learning some new things.
I would just add, you leave a good, large pair of shoes to fill.
Well, and I will say, you know, you've been a great example of, of pleasant discourse and, you know, really putting other people first in the conversation, and I just appreciated your style and your graciousness as chair. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you very much. Moving on, correspondence. Do we have correspondence?
None for this evening, Chair Roof.
And moving on to the final item, Planning Staff Comments, Reports, and Updates of Current Projects.
Yes. Well, starting with Commissioner Don Bradley, on behalf of staff and the Community Development Department, I will just say that it has been such a pleasure having you serve on the commission for all your contributions, for, for your tireless commitment to the planning profession. And, and I think, I wish I would have done this before this meeting, but I think you had really great attendance record, Don. You served as chair, I think it was, from 2018 to 2019, and then you had three, three, two years consecutive, but a total of three years, three years overall, serving as the RDRC chair. And as everyone knows who's been RDRC chair, that's, it takes a lot of, I guess, tenacity, you know, dealing with single-family homes and working with the neighbors. It's, 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 it's a different kind of context than we have up here with the commission. So I, on behalf of staff, we just really appreciate you volunteering. Of all the things that you've done in your career, I didn't realize that we were your first commission, so we feel pretty lucky to have you and glad that you volunteered. And just, just to let everyone know, I do believe that next Monday, on June 27th, the city council will be presenting a proclamation to Commissioner Bradley, so if you're interested in watching that or attending, the council will be recognizing Don for your service on the commission. It's been great. I can't believe it's been six years. It went by so fast, and I know we'll continue to see you, Don, and you are definitely dedicated to planning, so I'm sure we'll be hearing from you in the audience or in some other avenue. So thank you so much.
But there won't be food like you gave us tonight next week.
Well...
I should have added, too, that of all the planning staffs I've worked on and for in a lot of roles, and I worked in North Carolina, Michigan, Venezuela, Eritrea in Africa, where else? Tahrir, Pohang in South Korea, a semester. I've never run into as good a staff as we have here. Outstanding. There's a lot of turnover, I noticed, but all the work gets done in a highly professional manner that's presented to us. We all know how much work goes into it, Lisa and Chris coming along, too. So I have a card, so sometime, let's have coffee or tea or a drink, maybe, so I can keep in touch with all of you. I love all of you. Thank you.
Absolutely. Thank you, Don. Thank you for that. We will definitely miss you. Couple other things to make announcements on. The commission may recall that we are going to be taking a summer recess in July this year as opposed to August. We've always done in previous years, so we won't have any meetings with the commission in the month of July. So after tonight, we will be returning for our first meeting on August the 1st, very easy date to remember, first meeting back on the 1st, and, and then the 15th. We do have the housing element that is really getting close to having the draft document be available and ready for the commission to review, to share with the public and get comments. I will be sending out an email to the commission directly as soon as that document is available, because it could be that it becomes available sometime in the month of July, but I will give you the heads up. And we are required by state law to have that document be available for 30 days, so there'll be plenty of time to look that over. So that's one of the things I wanted to mention, so that's a pretty big item coming up. The city is working on planning commission recruitment to fill Don's seat. Can't replace Don, but we do have a, we'll have a vacancy after tonight, and so it could be that I may be hosting another meet and greet so that the commission can meet the newest member. I will keep you posted on that as well. And then after that, I think, I think that's it for my announcements. So have a great summer recess.
Okay. Well, thank you, Lisa, and we can adjourn our meeting. Well done. Look at you. That's going, setting a standard, huh? Setting a standard for you.
Cutting it close.